I'd like to welcome everybody to the June the 9th, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Guyman City Council. I'd like to introduce Pastor Tino Espinoza from the Victory Memorial United Methodist Church. If you'll come up front, lead the invocation for us.
Yes.
Please come over here to the podium. We get you on TV.
Okay. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We thank you for the gift of service. We thank you for the opportunity that you gave to this, our council, to serve you to the service to this community. May your Holy Spirit give them wisdom. May he guide them as they deal with several issues trying to better our communities. Bless us all in Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Mr. King, would you lead our salute?
I pledge allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson.
Aye.
Swager.
Here.
King.
Here.
Crone.
Here.
Alvedras.
Here.
Hawkins.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second the motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Swager and a second by Mr. Alvedras.
King.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is public comments and announcements. Any public comments and announcements?
I have one if there's nobody else.
Jump right in there.
Okay. I'd like, David, I'd like to introduce David Harris. If you'll stand up, wave hello. David Harris is our new program director with IBTS. He started on June 6th, and he previously served as the Assistant Director of Public Works since 2009 at the city of Brownwood, Texas, where he managed eight departments, including water distribution, wastewater collection, wastewater treatment, streets, landfill sanitation, development services, and engineering. These departments had 101 employees and a $17.5 million annual operations budget. David also has served as the Director of Utilities from 2002 to 2009 in Brownwood prior to his promotion. David previously worked four years for Aquasource Inc., which was the largest investor-owned utility in Texas after working for Texas Rural Water Association for four years, where he provided technical assistance and training for water and wastewater systems. He worked at a small city in West Texas through high school and college, where he started at the bottom and on his climb to where he is today. David has a Class A license in water, wastewater, and municipal solid waste, and a customer service inspector's license to go with his two degrees from Texas A&amp;M University. David has 27 years of experience as a licensed operator and over 17 years of management. David also has extensive training in emergency management and is married to Tanya, who's a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful woman, and they have three children between the ages of 18 and 20 years that live in various locations in Texas. We are glad to have David. Please stop by and see him anytime you like.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Any other public comments and announcements? I got two. Reminder, the Pink Heels and the Panhandle Partners are going together and having a concert Saturday night at the Activity Center. Local record, she's climbing her way up to be a recording star, Melissa McLaughlin's going to be in concert, 7:00 PM at the Activity Center Saturday night. And also, I'd like to extend my thanks, and I think everybody else will join me, to Chet Crone and all of his gang that put together the deal for the flags at the cemetery, the tribute, and all the city staff that worked through the weekend at the cemetery. Cemetery looked real, real green. They'd had some problems keeping up the grass because it was all growing, but it was all been mowed. But anyway, it looked real good, and we really appreciate your time, Chet.
Congratulations. We had a wonderful.
Thank you.
We had a great, we had a great group of volunteers come out this year, and as you said, the city employees were right on top of everything, and I get a lot of credit for it, but I couldn't do it without the volunteers at all. There's just no way. So, thank you.
You bet. Any other public comments or announcements? Agenda item number five is presentation of the monthly activities and the financial report by Main Street Guyman. Ms. Johnson. Sergio said keep it short. He's got to go run.
Well, Lynn doesn't understand that statement.
I'm sorry. What'd you say?
I said Sergio said make it short. He's got to go run. You're a little bit.
Hey, they're already there.
I know. There's one, there's a group at seven.
Oh, okay. You're going with the real runners. The thirsty ones. Okay. Whoops. In May, our television program with PTCI for Channel 2 was taped at the youth shelter. So, that's, that's the June program, I believe, that was taped in May. And then, our cash mob, we mobbed Merle Norman, and there were eight mobsters that went that evening, and she told me afterwards, they spent $804 during the mob, and then several others came during the week. So, that was, for 30 minutes, she thought it was pretty good. Healthy Moment was held at the Guyman Fire Department. There were seven in attendance. And then, we went to the Main Street Awards banquet in OKC. There was one, one that won, Tri-County Electric won the Best Business Practices. So, I believe that's the second award we've won at that over the years. Outback was on May 13th. The Iron Thunder did a wonderful, wonderful job once again. They had a lot of, they had over 1,000 riders. I had to attend the National Main Street Conference in Milwaukee in May. And then, our vital volunteer was Alfonso Mata. We had 368 volunteer hours and 114 different people. So, it was pretty good. I think they all liked it better because I was gone. I only have one really pertinent thing to also bring up. I've been working with folks in the community, and we have a bus tour proposal ready to send to several companies to try to get some visitors during Pioneer Day and over a three-day period to be here. And that's a long and drawn-out process, but we've got, I think we have a really good proposal then, then up. And if you guys want to see it, I can email it to you. But, that's the main part, you know, and Serge is thirsty, so do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No.
I guess not. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for going to the banquet, Mayor.
I was there anyway, but I enjoyed it.
It was, it was good.
Agenda item number six is presentation of monthly activities and financial report by artist incubation.
I know that normally I keep my reports fairly short. Tonight's going to be just a little bit shorter. May wasn't too active of a month for us after the first week. Obviously, we had Pioneer Days, Pioneer Weekend. We had good flux through the gallery and stuff like that. We had our artist showcase at the beginning during Pioneer Week. Mr. Brian Test from OPSU did his show. Really great turnout, really good show. Had some pretty good sales and stuff through his show, too. And then, throughout the rest of the month, we had some stuff going on. Most of May, though, what we did is we began prepping for June, which is our art camps, our annual art camps that are going on now, and then, of course, forming some committees for other events. Probably one of the biggest ones coming up is Dinner on the Lake. And so, I know that a lot of times, it's a big event, and a lot of times, people want planning. So, I'm putting out there now, August 27th is our date for Dinner on the Lake this year. So, you guys can write that down and make sure you get your tickets early enough. But, like I said, May wasn't really all that active of a month for us, excuse me, for us, as far as activities. It was more of a planning month for the future coming events. As far as some of the restorations I've mentioned before, the front of the building, I've had to switch contractors. The initial one that I talked to kind of backed out a little bit, and so, I've been talking to some other guys, and I think I found one that is going to be able to do the front of the building for us, as well as doing some new flooring inside, and then, hopefully, getting some new lighting in there, too, so we can light up our art better. So, a lot of big things coming in the future. So, that's all I got for now. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action on declaring a surplus. 1995 Ford F-350 Boardman ambulance VIN, we're going to have to spread that out, 1FDK 537F1TEB67988, and other miscellaneous items. And this is the request or staffed report attached, and this is from Chief McFadden. Any questions? I don't see them here tonight.
Are we going to wait until there is a bigger sale, or are we trying to go out and just sell this?
He says he has a couple of places that he could post and try and sell, but we would keep it for our auction if it didn't sell on the boards that he uses. So.
Does he have an idea what roughly they expect?
He doesn't think that it's worth very, yeah.
He doesn't have a minimum.
No.
And I know this is kind of a little bit off of it, but since we're talking selling, you know, we've had a representative several years ago from that BR and online auctions for vehicles, where we can get them done when we declare them surplus, get them off the insurance. And that, that might be a suggestion. We can't take any action on that tonight.
I think that's what he, was one of the ones that he had mentioned that he knew of.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Motion?
We approve, declare a surplus of 1995 Ford F-350 Boardman ambulance for sale.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Swager and a second by Mr. King.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
King.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion on competitive bid requirements. Ms. Me?
This is an item that was requested by Councilmember Crone. Currently, the threshold for competitive bidding for real property within the city of Guyman is $50,000, and he had some proposals for different numbers, so I'll let him discuss what he would like.
Quite frankly, I was not looking at a competitive bidding requirement change so much as I was looking at, right now, anything at 50,000 and above. I believe you have to competitively bid. Is that correct? And what I was wanting to do was look at a, at a number that we would look at it before we went and purchased something. Oftentimes, you know, if it's under 50,000, we may run out and buy a pickup, or, and I use that as an example. And I think a lot of times, if we looked at it, we might say, well, are you sure you need that pickup, or would you rather have a mower? And, you know, that was my idea. I'm not adverse to lowering the bid requirements.
So, I'm trying to understand. Council approves all of our capital purchases, whether it's a mower or anything that meets the threshold of what we set the other night as a capital item that goes into fixed assets. Council approves that at budget time, and that's, that's the two days that we spent sorting through them from the different departments. So, so council does approve those things at 5,000, well, you said 2,500, so anything above $2,500, council makes a decision about that during the budget process. So, I guess my question would be, is what would your process be for?
We approve.
Once you approve it in the budget, and then, you would do what after that?
Seems like we approve things that are in the, in the budget, but then, what we don't approve is the money that's in the budget. And it just seems to me that we have had things come up that we approved in the budget, and then, we have to figure out how to pay for it. And it seems like the question always comes up, you know, when somebody wants an item, somebody on the council will ask, well, is it, is it in the budget? And you'll answer yes. And, okay, it's in the budget, but we really don't have a way to pay for it.
Well, we generally, we generally do at least purchase for most of our equipment, and we also budget revenues to, to cover the expenses in that same budget. And also, I monitor the budget throughout the year, and if we, we don't try to purchase everything at the beginning, and if we are at a place where we are not ready to buy, then I don't want to buy. But, to say that we put things in the budget that we don't have revenue for is not necessarily a true statement. If you want to be the people who say you can't have it, then that's fine with me. You can bring back whatever you want. It'll slow down purchasing, but it'll make me not be the bad guy anymore, so.
I'm not the bad guy.
I'm, I'm good with that. You can pick a number, and I will send them to you.
That was what I asked for it to be on the agenda for, was so we could discuss a number. And, you know, frankly, I figure it'll probably, we'll probably end up with a compromise number. I'm sure that I would like a lower number than most people, but that's okay. I'd like to see, to be honest with you, anything over 2,500 actually be approved before. About after.
But, we, I visited with Mr. King about this the other day, but, but we do approve department heads' budgets. And then, when we do the budget, it lists all the capital things we're going to buy. Right?
True.
Right.
So, so everything's listed. So, do we want to say that before we allow one of our department heads, who I think we should, we have, personally, I have the faith and confidence they're going to make the right decisions, because they wanted to get the most bang for their buck out of the budget, out of the money they have?
I consider that, but sometimes it's in the budget, so let's buy it. And we may not really need it, and we may not have the money to buy it.
If we don't have the money, that's the city manager's job to say, we don't have the money, you can't go buy it.
Okay, but you look at the golf right now, and all the stuff that we bought for us. We spent over $100,000 over the four months, and it never stopped until he resigned his position. In fact, we approved, tonight on shoes, heels on those, so they never stopped those four months, and the ashes should have been sold. I mean, if you bought an iPad, do you know where that iPad is?
No, I don't.
Do you have it?
I do not. I do not have it. He does not have it. He says it was left in the top left-hand drawer of his desk, and it's not there, but there have been more people than him in that golf shop, so.
I realize that, but that's what means, but there's the lack of accountability there. And that's just an example, you know, and that's why I think with the economy being the way it is, I think we need to be a little bit stricter on what we're buying. Oh, I was saying that.
Put your mic, put your mic a little closer now.
I'll turn it down. I'll shut it off.
But, with the way the economy is right now, I think we need to be a little bit, make sure we do need it and we can afford it, not just buy it.
My question is, is how are you going to make that decision?
We'd have to have it come to the council.
But how would the council make the decision upon whether or not we had the funds available?
We'd probably ask if.
So, if you're going to ask me if we have the funds, would it just not make more sense for me to be the one to make the decision whether or not we have the funds?
Well, I think that's going back to you going out and buying anything below $50,000 without, you know, we don't, we don't have to approve that.
You approve that in the budget.
Right.
And then, you approve it again.
But the budget changes.
You approve it again in the purchase orders.
But it's approved in the purchase order after it's been purchased.
Not always. And it doesn't have to be that way.
But that's what happened with the golf course.
Well, the golf course was buying stuff to stock a pro shop, which was a directive that we gave him when we hired him. We want a pro shop. So, he bought the stuff to build a pro shop, which will sell and generate revenue. I can't have the revenue upfront to do a pro shop.
How much revenue have we generated in six months?
I, I don't have those numbers. He did not ask for them in advance. I'm just, I'm just saying he did exactly what we asked him to do.
No, we paid for his recertification as a PGA member, and then, he left us.
Okay. We're, we're.
I just, I just feel like we're spending, you know, that we need to start watching our lower numbers as well as we do our big numbers, that we spend an awful lot on travel and training. We spend an awful lot on, I'll call them smaller items in the, in the under $10,000 range, but.
You do recognize that this will only affect the fire department and the ambulance and the golf, right? Everything else falls underneath their contract. So.
IBTS.
IBTS. Yeah. So, and I'm, and I'm fine. You can pick whatever number you want. I'm not arguing with you. I'm just trying to figure out what your process is going to be to implement it.
That's why I've been asking for invoices, and so, we know what IBTS is actually buying with the city's money.
That's not, that's not, that's not part of our contract.
Maybe it should have been. Anyway, it's just a discussion item, so.
Well, I need something so that I can give to Mr. Petty, so that he can draft something for your approval at another meeting, so I need to at least have some sort of guidelines that you'd like to begin to see written.
I gave you mine, so.
But the set amount at the beginning of the year, that's what's set for IBTS, correct?
Right.
And then?
We pay them in 12 monthly installments. And at the end of.
That never fluctuates?
No. And at the end of the year, then, we will have their line items and what they spend compared to the contract. And if they spend more, then that's their problem. If they spend less, we split the savings 50/50. They keep, and we keep 50%. We get it back, so.
But we do have an incentive to watch what they're, they're spending.
They have an incentive to watch what they're spending as well, because they get to have revenue.
We get half of it also, so they have to give us incentive to make sure they're spending our money wisely.
Okay. So, everybody.
Is there a threshold that we want to put into an ordinance? Is there a process that you would like to outline to put into an ordinance?
Like I said, I give you my figures. I don't want to blow.
You realize that every time the ambulance buys medical supplies, it's over that amount of money.
Right.
So, you don't want the ambulance to be able to buy medical supplies until you come to council. So, you want the ambulance to be without supplies.
I would have to buy.
The golf has stopped buying shoes. We have stopped to stop in the golf shop.
Okay. All right. Let's call it a little time here. Steve, do you wish your, your figure? Did you throw a figure, Chip?
I didn't throw a figure out, but the figure that I would be satisfied with would be in the neighborhood of 10,000.
And would you like those to come to you in the form of a purchase order prior to listed separately?
No, I wouldn't. I, I don't think we need an ordinance until we've come to a consensus among the councilmen as to what they want. And you've heard from two of us, and maybe the other three aren't, aren't interested in this at all, and I'd like to have, hear them say so, but.
Okay.
But there's no sense in drafting an ordinance if, if, you know, if the council's not interested.
Well, what's your, what's the bottom line? I mean, what's 25,000? Is that operating cost of the ambulance doesn't always have to come to us, and the fire department, medical supplies, is, is that a good threshold?
25,000?
Yes.
So.
So, it would be half of that, right?
Yes. So, in the Diana Brown days, it was $25,000, and she had it raised to 50. So.
So, I think, well, if I.
I would, before I was elected as councilperson, I was sitting out there at the time that it went from 25 to 50 based on OML, and Diana Brown was gone at that time. And sitting out there, I thought 50,000 was, oh, my gosh, that's a bunch, because as a partner in a store, we didn't do anything for over 30,000 without both of us being on the line.
Right.
I would think cutting it in half at 25.
I think that would be.
And go back to the original before they bumped it.
If we're throwing out numbers, that's my number. But then again, this is just a discussion.
I'm good with whatever you want to do, gentlemen. You know, 50 to me works because we go through the budget process and we list capital stuff, but if you want to do 25, I don't think, personally, I don't think you can go much below the 25,000 threshold and, and our people be effective in doing their jobs throughout the week, because we have some times of the month that we go the long month, we have three weeks between council meetings, and I don't want to have to, us to get into a point that we start having special council meetings just to approve purchases. And again, I'll go back to my original statement, is the fact that we've hired professional people. We should have the faith and, and belief in those people for them to make the proper decisions. And if we haven't done that, if we don't have that faith, then maybe we don't have the right people. But I, but I think most of our staff are very diligent about the purchases they make and about the money they spend for the city, and so, I don't want to hamstring them to the point they can't operate and do their jobs. Any other discussion?
Well, I think we've started the dialogue, and I think now that it has been started, that as we go along, department heads, ITPS, whoever can come up and visit with us a little bit, give us their opinions, and find out exactly how we feel. And if it needs to come back to council, we can come back on this item. But at least we have started the dialogue, and you realize that some of us are looking at it.
Can we discuss just a little bit what you might want that process to look like so that the department heads will understand? So.
Um, let's see. I believe it was a meeting or two back, we approved a, some sort of a, I've forgotten now what it was, a mower or something for the golf, golf course.
Rough mower.
Yeah. Now, that one, I believe we went out for bids on. Did we, or, no, we just, we just went out for finance.
But we went out for bids for the financing. Yes.
I would have liked for them to come and say, hey, look, we're looking at this mower, and this is going to cost us, we estimate, this much money. We could look at it and say, okay, now, you know, we're going to have to finance this. What are we going to do? Give us a chance, or a more of a chance to sit down and kind of decide, where is our money going? It's been driven into me that we are the stewards of the city finances, and I just kind of like to know where the money's going.
But again, they do that at the budget time.
Any other input?
Is there, like, when they spend, say, discounts, or they're able to buy at a cheaper rate if they're buying more at one time?
I'm sure chemicals and various things are. I'm sure chemicals and various things are, in bulk is a, well, I know chlorine, if you buy it in bulk is a cheaper rate than fertilizer and grass seed.
We don't, we don't want to do the point where they do three fives when they could have done a 15 and got a discount.
And I agree with Mr. Peterson. We don't want to get into a situation where we're gonna have to have a bunch of special meetings, but...
Right. We don't want to lose the effectiveness of our, of the staff either.
Excuse me?
We don't want to lose the effectiveness of the staff if they can't do their job, if they can't do their own purchasing. And we're talking, like Mrs. Meek said, ambulance, fire and golf.
Please.
You know, the rest falls under the IBTS cloud. But like Mr. Swager said, he'd like to have some input on, on maybe the big line items.
So I guess my question is, is you want council approval in a council meeting? You want the department head to send you an email? You want somebody to, you know, what, what's the, what's the mechanism that you want? You just want to know that we're doing it? You want to pass judgment on whether or not we're going to do it?
I love your terminology.
Oh?
Pass judgment. Yeah, I would, I wouldn't mind us seeing the department head come to us and, you know, let us know what they're up to, what they're doing.
So you want them to come say mother may I?
They can send us an email, but we really, that really doesn't, you know, we can't get together and talk about anything until we have a meeting, so, by law.
It's approved in the budget meeting. That's why we went through the two days of discussion of what each department needed, and they submitted all their requests to you, and you sorted through them, and you gave them certain things and didn't give them certain things. And then they started their year, and they start their year knowing how they need to operate with the things that you have allowed them to operate with. And when it comes time to purchase it, if you then say to them they cannot have this, it changes their operations, changes their entire plan.
What happens if we get in a position like Willard is right now? Would they rather not have piece of equipment, or would they rather be four of them?
So, once again, how will you have the information to know whether or not the purchase can be made?
Was the money spent on golf equipment, was that already in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my question.
You would be the person to tell us.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? I would suggest, I would suggest that we can continue, if you want, if you want to continue your discussions, you can visit with Ms. Meek, you can visit with Mr. Petty.
If I'm not confused or misinformed, there's gonna be a financial analyst come on board? So, I mean, maybe the analyst could have some input on that as well? On, I don't know. I'm throwing out.
She will eventually, yes.
Okay. So maybe compile a summary of what's being done. I mean, that's what they do, right? They analyze. So...
And she, she, she will have accounting experience, so she will learn governmental accounting quickly. She will need some time to learn the differences between the accounts and how our accounting system works. But once she is up to speed, she will be, yes.
So maybe some reports to the councilman would kind of help out?
That is, yes, exactly what is, what is planned.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Technical difficulties. You run your battery out already?
Please stand by.
All right. We good?
See if that's better.
All right. Any other discussion on the competitive bidding requirements? Any other discussion? Agenda item number eight is discussion on establishing a fund balance reserve amount.
And this came in to play in the discussion of the bond issue. We currently don't have anything that limits us to how much or requires us to maintain a level of, of fund balance in our general fund. So your options are, what you would do is draft an ordinance that would say we expect or we want a percentage of our general fund revenues to be, or if you want to use the authority as well, to be put into a fund that cannot be touched except for these reasons. And then the council would outline what those reasons were that that could be used or emergency situations. And so you would outline what those, those were. And then you would also outline what different funds would contribute to that balance. And then they would get them back in the percent that they contribute. And then it generally, I mean, you know, you'll decide whether you want a three-fourths majority or you want, you know, your three-fifths majority. And, and then just what happens if you fall below because of an emergency situation? At what rate would you want to bring it back? And so I don't know. Crawford Associates says 10% is your starting place, at least 10%. 35% when they do their performator is considered a 10 or a perfect rating. So that would be the, the maximum that you would want. And you would want to set rules that said when it reached the maximum, you must spend. So you never let it go above the maximum. And so it's basically up to, to you and what you would like to see. And it's, it would be my recommendation that maybe we have Marcy or Frank come and, and talk to you about that and kind of give you some guidance on what you might. They have an ordinance that they wrote for Bartlesville, and they've helped other cities decide what they want to do. So if you're interested in that, I can arrange that. If you're not interested in that, then we can just attempt to draft ourselves. It's up to you. I think it's a good idea.
Could we get a copy of, like, Bartlesville ordinance?
I can get you Bartlesville. Theirs is a little, they have different funds than we have. But I can get you that. It, it reads a little different than what we would want ours to read. But what, what's really important is, is where do you want to start? What's, what's the number that you're comfortable with? And then start thinking about what would be the reasons why we would dip into the fund. And how many people you want to be of it, have to make the, the decision. And then what to do if we ever have to and we want to rebuild it. So is it 2% a year you want to rebuild it because you can't do it back all in one year?
That performator?
Performator.
It said we were at 10%?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No. 10% is what they consider the least that you would want to set. I think ours was, I think ours was at 35% last year.
At one time it was.
I think it was last year. I'm not sure.
So what would that be in the amount?
It depends on what we budget. And it's always your operational budget, not your capital. So you have to subtract out some things. And really, you can, you can word it whatever you, way you want. You can say 10% of your revenues, or you can say 10% of your expenses. It's up to you. I think, I think starting low and, and beginning to increase it is, is probably the best way to go. But we, we ended with a good one last year, so I, I don't think you'll have any problem with any of them. But I can send you that ordinance, and I can ask them for other ones. Their website usually has more examples, but it, it didn't this time. But if you would like, Marcy, and actually, the auditors are here right now, I probably could have gotten them to speak about it. But she'd be more than happy, or Frank, to come and say why you would want to, what reasons we would want to do that for, and why those are reasons that are good.
Could we possibly take some time and look at all the different other towns, see what they do before we bring them in to make some kind of, that way we've got kind of a menu to pick from?
Yeah.
Because there's, there's some that have, maybe have, there might be some that have things that we, that appeal to us more than other ones. And then we could pick out, over a period of discussion. We don't have to do this next week or next month.
But Mayor, can, can we set a timeline of what we're doing? Just because, I mean, this was something, I mean, this is something that I think is, would be really beneficial to us, so...
Oh, I think we, I think in the same timeline you want.
Well, I would like to have it in place before we finalize a budget. That's, that would be my goal.
So how, how long do you want to?
That's an excellent idea.
Yeah, by the end of, I mean, by...
I'd like, personally, I'd like to see it, see it done by the first of August.
That'd be a good date.
So, so the council's research?
That way we have it in place when we start planning for the next budget.
So the council's research done, and then you bring people in at the end of August, or already been done?
Well, I think we need to do, I think this needs to be maybe a continuing discussion almost every meeting.
What if, they usually come and present the audit and the, and the performator in August. So what if we just combined their trip and added that to something that they discuss? Us, us do our research in the meantime?
Would that be cheaper for us?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
You said that would save us some money right there.
And Frank may come and do it for free.
That was what I was trying to get to.
But I think we could put them all together.
Was that way, we've picked from the menu options. And we've said, four of us like this one, let's come prepared to...
And they all, and like I said, each city has a different structure in their funds and the way they funnel their money. So they're all gonna, they're all gonna read oddly to us because we do things a little differently. So we'll have to wordsmith and, and do that. But not all cities have them. But we'll find some more that do. And maybe get them to tell us what the pluses or the minuses were after they did it. Because it will constrict your ability to use funds. It will make it more difficult for a council to decide they want to do things. So that's, that's, that has its pluses and it has its minuses. It really doesn't have any effect upon me. It's, it's, it comes budgetary time is what we'll be able to, to do. So think about that when you're deciding what reasons you can use to, to get into the funds.
Also, and I believe the three out of five to make a decision rather than four out of five would be, give you a lot more flexibility too.
Yeah. Particularly if it's, and I think also, as I recall, there was some language in there that said if you, if there was an emergency that threatened life, public safety and, and whatnot, that it did not require the vote of the council to do it. It could just be done at that time. So, so there's some several provisions in there that, you know, you want to take into consideration before we just say this is our number. Probably want to look at the history of, of where we've been in the, in the past. And we've been steadily, we've been high for a considerable amount of time. So...
Sally, what, can you put some, get some input on what we've been in the past?
Well, I can put some input on cash numbers. I think that it's different because when I think about budget, I think about our whole revenue budget, our whole budget, which is 30 million, whatever it is. And that's different than what you're speaking to. You're talking about within a specific fund, and that looks way different.
Right.
So then that becomes a question. And that's, I think, what Kimberly's saying is that you, we can tailor it however council deemed's necessary. But it looks a lot different if our operational budget, and I don't, do you know that number, Kim?
We always have capital blended in there.
And so you'd have to break that out and take a look at it. But your capital improvements over the last several years have been significant. And so that, that's a big number compared to operational, and that looks very different. So as far as a cash number goes of your total budget, I can speak to that. But that's, that's one way of hundreds, it sounds like, of looking at it.
Well, and we have to take into consideration that the, the two additional cent funds, one cent sales taxes that we have, they're required to be spent on capital improvements, wastewater and water, and then the other just general capital improvements. And so those funds, you have to spend those funds. I mean, it's not an option to not spend those funds. So really, to put a cap on them is just impairing your ability to, to buy the things that you're supposed to buy with people's money. Your utilities authority, its point is, is, it's operated like a business. So we try to set rates that cover the operational expense plus some capital and, and basically, I want to say generate a profit. But we, you know, we don't want to come up with a zero at the end of the year. So that one, it doesn't get. And then we have several funds that we can't control. The police special revenue fund, it has to be spent on certain and specific items. We're really just the fiduciary for it. And the 911 account, there are several numbers that are included in that total budget that we really can't tell them, no, they can't spend because it's their money, not ours. So as long as they have money to spend, they're allowed to spend it. So it's not as easy as just adding up all the different things and then saying this is our number and going with it.
This 1%, that your 1% sales tax that you're saying, that goes into Fund 44?
Yes. And then another one goes in Fund 48. And Fund 48 is for water and wastewater projects. And those funds sit with the trustee in a different place. We don't have those funds on hand. And we make drawdowns from it as we have the invoices. So those, those invoices that you see from Cardinal Engineering that are listed one at a time, those are coming out of the Fund 48 funds, not out of our, not out of Sally's funds. So the trustee requires us to sign, the mayor signs a request form, and then they pay directly to the vendor because those are funds that we can only use for specified purposes. And the trustee has to make sure, because it's tax exempt, that we do that. And so that, we have to go through that process to get them paid. So those funds that we have over there are not included in the cash that Sally manages and reports upon as well.
So really, growing our capital fund, Fund 44 really doesn't save us any, any rainy day funds, right?
No, because you can't take Fund 44 and you can't transfer it into your general fund. Now, you can take your general fund and transfer it out into that, but you can't go the other way. So now, if you're wanting to do a particular project that is multi, more than you generate in a single year in the sales tax fund, then you would just hold the cash and wait. And, and that's something that's an option.
And budget for it?
Yes.
And then move it at the right time.
And just wait until you have the funds available to do it, or issue bonds to do it, either way. But, so those two funds don't really fall into that category. And then, I'm searching for funds. Like, the library has a fund. So the library gets funded out of two mechanisms. The general fund funds the library, and the library has its own fund that's funded by state aid. And so we can't accumulate the state aid. We have to, there's a threshold that we have to spend, or the next year we get cut. So that one can't really be part of that because you don't want to accumulate a balance in that account. 911, police special revenue, the court bond has one. So really, your general fund and then, well, like the swimming pool. The swimming pool has two places that you spend money out of. You spend money out of the general fund for the swimming pool operations. But then the swimming pool has its own, its own fund. And then it's also part of your Fund 44. So there's multiple places that each department gets funded out of. And some of them we just can't limit. It's not our money.
So over the next...
Go ahead.
So over the next three months, we're gonna formulate this, itemize them, what we can do, what we can't, and come up with something, some strategic plan that we can present to Crawford and Mr. Petty, and then go forward. Excuse me, Sally, go ahead.
No, you're good. Well, I was just gonna say, one of the things that I, I have looked at and read about is one way to try to come up with a, a cash reserve number, percentage that councilman might be comfortable with is to do an analysis on, like, sales tax and determine if there was a 10% decline. Or the same thing with utilities. And obviously, utilities shouldn't see the decline that sales tax would. But if there was a significant decline in sales tax revenue, then, then what would that make things look like? And how much should we have on reserve in the event that happens? So I'll be happy to assist you guys.
And that, and that's based upon how much operational cash do you want to have sitting over there in case the revenues that you think that you're going to come in, don't come in. So, and so that's operational. And right now, a lot of that's set in place.
Any other discussion? Other ideas? Any other discussion? Other ideas? Everybody good? Okay.
No, just as long as we stick to the timeline.
You just blew it.
I will get you some stuff.
Agenda item number 10 is reports and comments from the city manager and council members. Anybody have any comments or reports?
I have several. Councilman Crone and I went to the, the three buildings, the fire station, animal shelter and the library the other day. And I just want to compliment and binge you on how well the animal shelter just looks spanking brand new. They were washing windows and everything at the fire station when we were there, but I'm a little disappointed in the library and the way it's, it's looking. There's some leakages. It's running down the wall and there's some spots on the carpet and, and it's, is looking in the closets. I mean, it's just completely different than going into those other two buildings that, that there. Another one is the Frisbee course. Can we move that to, we've had some pretty, pretty weather out there across park. Would be wonderful if we could start that Frisbee project.
Frisbee golf project was part of Fund 44 that we have not approved the funding for. And I can't allow them to build it until I have some funds. So Pete will tell you that he came to me and I said, we need to hold until there's revenue.
The other day behind the, dirted this morning, behind the, the old library, I went over and did the splash pad and watched it come up. So.
Did you get in it or just?
I did not, but I, I did. And it is working.
Did you squeal after you made it come on? Because that's what kids do.
I didn't know what I was supposed to do. So next time I'll just squeal.
Any other, anything else?
That's all.
Any other comments, reports?
I got, I got a couple. I have some compliments from constituents on the streets. Seems like the crews are always running around doing something, being safe, making everything look good. So compliments to the streets department. The parks department for Mr. Hedrick and his guys for the rebirth, the rebirth of the volleyball pit. That was a, that was a hit. I got to visit with the class of 1996 at their last reunion, a lot of out of towners and they, they like the direction that Guyman is heading and they like the progress that it's showing. I heard some good things there. I had, I went, yeah. So that was good. And it was mentioned to me, the, the grounds behind the football, west of the football field, so west of the, so down there by the shooting. So are, what's, do we clean that up?
Yeah.
Like Pete's been, they've been working on that for the last year, cutting the trees off the bank of the dam and trying to clean that up.
I, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to go out there. I just heard it from two people that I, I guess rarely, there's, when there's races, they go down through there. And I guess some of them mentioned to me that if we do clean that up, and I, I thought we did. So.
Like they did as they can fit it in. Is that right, Pete?
A lot of them down there just lost their hair.
A lot of them down there.
Yeah, just go to the cliff and push it over.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we can put up some wireless cameras up there. That'll deter that.
What's probably the worst thing out there right now, been going on. Every time it rains, you know, there's water to sit down in there. They go muddin' out there. All the four-wheelers. Mark cleaned that up and bladed it out. I don't know. Every time.
That, I mean, that's, that's really the only question that I had. It wasn't really a complaint. It was just a question. So kudos to the staff.
Anything else?
Well, I, I've got just the concern about money. I read in the Guyman Daily about the state of Oklahoma's revenue was down 20% last month. And it just, that bothers me because is that a signal of things to come? Or, you know, is it a blimp? Because, you know, they've been fighting, the legislature's been fighting a $1.3 billion shortfall for this year's budget. So I just wanted to bring that up so we're aware that things might get tough.
Mr. Crone?
I've been noticing the new trash receptacles around some of the parks. They look nice and I especially like the plastic bags to follow your dog around with. Especially when I forget to take my, thank you.
Anything else? I have two. Dr. Tim Fulton has arrived at Panale State University. He's the president over there. He's jumping in with both feet. I've got to know him quite well. And I was with him yesterday morning and he plans on attending a council meeting in the very near future. Would like to become acquainted with all of us and be a, a part of Guyman. And also last week, the community leader development academy that's sponsored through OML and some other folks were in town last Thursday and Friday. And the reports I've heard from the folks who are here, they had a very good stay. They're quite impressed. They had their meetings here in city hall, as you all were well aware. But, but I've received several, several texts and messages that they all told me how welcomed they feel that felt in Guyman, that then they hope to come back. Any other reports or comments?
I just want to say that was their second time to be in Guyman. And the people who showed up this time had heard from others what, how great this portion was and were anxious to be here. And that Miranda Gilbert arranges that and, and provides all of the various activities for them and arranges their food and sets up the tables. And I believe Soyless still helps her and I think Katie had a lot to do with that too. So it's, it's their, kudos to them that they showed such hospitality for those people.
Okay, any new business? Any new business? Will stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council. Will re-adjourn as the Guyman Utilities Authority if I find it here.
Sergio, you're going to have to go. You're going to have to go.
Oh, I'm good.
You have three minutes.
I had it. I'm just, something happened. It disappeared. It's an eye. That can happen. Called order the June 9th, 2016, regular meeting of the Guyman Utilities Authority. Agenda item number two is approval of the consent agenda we've already done. Are there any public comments or announcements? Public comments or announcements. Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on approval to advertise for bids on a new 45-foot live floor transfer trailer for the sanitation department. There's a staff report attached. Ms. Rice, do you want to enlighten us or?
Yes. Well, it's a little past time probably to add another trailer due to our growth. Guyman's grown enough that Mondays and Tuesdays at the sanitation department is, you're moving a lot of trash. Due the, due to the confinement of a small enough building, we don't have space to stack that trash, you know, on reserve. So as fast as we can get one load out of here to Liberal, before we can get it back, we've got another one loaded. So I'm asking you to consider a new trailer. And we will keep the last tra, I believe the oldest trailer we've got is from 2006. And it's pretty warped on the sides. It's, it does the job, but it's, it's mended daily almost. We don't go a month without doing some work on it as far as welding. And with the sides bowing out, you're not secure on your tarp, no matter how tight you get it. So you've got, you lose some trash. And he does a good job of, of securing it before he leaves, but it's a little tough. And I would just like you to consider going out for bids for that. And we would keep that trailer because when we do get that busy, that trailer will hold 18 tons. Even if we don't have a driver, we could fill it and put it back on the property there and save it until we could get a driver in it. It helps us that much.
Okay. Any discussion, motion?
What, what do you think one of these run?
Five years ago, we gave 55,800. And so I know they haven't gotten any cheaper, but they're.
Was that a used one?
Pardon me?
Was that a used one or was that a new one?
That was a new one.
That was a new one. Okay.
Before that, we had bought, that was a, an emergency buy because we had the wreck in Liberal. Before that, we had bought two at a time and, but one of those was wrecked. So that's the one we're still using now.
Normal, like a 10-year life?
Pardon me?
10-year life?
Yeah. And we're pushing that right now.
Any discussion? I'll make a motion that we approve them to go out to advertise for bids.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. King and a second by Mr. Swager.
Crone?
Aye.
Albedras?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion of possible action on approval to advertise for bids for financing for a new 45-foot live floor transfer trailer for the sanitation department. I assume that's to finance this one.
Yep. That allows us to put the financing right on the heels of the bid opening so that we get the cash as soon as we can.
Do any discussion? Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the, go out to advertise for bids for the financing.
Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Albedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Any new business? Is there any new business? If not, will stand adjourned as the Guyman Utilities Authority. This thing's eating agendas, guys. I'm serious. Okay. All right. We'll reconvene as the Guyman Utilities, the employment, employment retirement board. There we go. Agenda item number two is approve the minutes of the May 26, 2016 meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes.
Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Albedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on request for early retirement for Velma Schultz.
That's just the way she's choosing to leave the retirement system of the city as she moves to the IBTS. Early retirement was the best option for her.
Okay. Do we have discussion or a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the action on request for early retirement for Velma Schultz.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Albedras?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
We're adjourned.